At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be the Marshall Baseball Association donation to the Legion Field improvements. I'm going to call on Preston Stensrude to introduce this topic as well as introduce the representatives of Marshall Baseball Association that are in attendance.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Derek Rignell, Kelly Loft, and Russ Sano from the Marshall Baseball Association. You guys may recall at the first meeting in January of last year, we were here for a donation to the Legion Field improvements, and they have donated money again, and we hope to get this project well on its way in 2024. So we wanted to bring them here and recognize them. Last week, we received a check for $64,000 towards Legion Field improvements that will be doing the backstop, the dugouts, new concession, and restrooms and stuff as part of the project, as well as some drainage and concrete work, too. Later in the consent agenda, I have the resolution accepting the donation, but for the opening item, just wanted to recognize them and thank them for their support, not only with this project, but just on going throughout the years of hosting tournaments and all the things they do for baseball and Marshall. So that would gladly answer any questions. Otherwise, just want to recognize these guys for all their work they do for Marshall Baseball.
Okay. Thank you, Preston. Any questions, or Derek, or Russ, or Kelly, anything you wanted to add? Typically, certainly, and I know you're never at a loss for something to say here.
I would say a few words. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and again, from the Marshall Baseball Association, just want to thank you for all your support from the city. We think it's an important project, you know, for Marshall Baseball. Obviously, we oversee the Marshall A's, our amateur town team, but we're very involved with MABA and all of our youth playing in Marshall. And Legion Field's a kind of our showcase field in our community and the park in general, not only the field, but everything around it. And I think we continue to build the field up with the amenities that we think that will, you know, attract even more games, and we have more people using it. SMSU has gone back to playing their home games and helping pay for rent in that facility at as well. So I think it's just a great partnership with the Marshall Baseball Association, and we're just pleased to keep helping support this and keep this project moving forward. And thank to Preston and his staff and everybody on council for your support.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments from the council?
Just thank you to MABA, and appreciate after sitting on the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission, thank you for all you do for youth sports and for the community. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think I would echo what Craig said. Not only thank you for the contribution, but thank you for what you've done for the community, not only this contribution, but over the years and your involvement. And certainly, you're doing it not for any self-interest, you're doing it to help the community. So thank you.
You bet. Thank you very much.
With that, we'll move then to Agenda Item Number Two. That would be consider the approval of the minutes of the special meeting that the council did have on December 19th. So the council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections to note?
Move we approve? Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number Three would be is general obligation bonds, a public hearing on the General Obligation Bonds 2024A series. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll consider the resolution on the five-year reconstruction plan and the issuance of the general obligation street reconstruction bonds. And that's what this hearing is about, the general obligation bonds would be for the reconstruction that's planned and as part of the five-year plan. I will call on E.J. Mulberg, Director of Administrative Services, to conduct this public hearing. E.J.?
Thank you. So as noted in the materials, the city is authorized by state statute to prepare a street reconstruction or between-us overlay plan as a five-year, over a five-year period, along with estimated costs, the type of project included, including the type of project to be financed. And then, once that is in there and there's a public hearing held, then following that hearing, the resolution would authorize the approval of that plan and the issuance of the GO bonds for the reconstruction purpose. So we're asking for an amount of up to $2.1 million as part of the plan. That would be for the every share of the Whitney, South Whitney Street project that's planned for this year, except for the portion that would come from MMU. So we would be financing, in this case, the surface water portion and the wastewater portion of this as part of the financing, to be part of the street reconstruction portion of that. So on the next page in the packet, on the first page of the first part of the plan here, the first section there in yellow is the 2024. So it does show that South Whitney Project itself is just over $2.5 million estimated cost. So we're asking for up to 2.1 to be bonded for as part of this project. I just wanted to also mention that if it goes to the vote, since this is a street reconstruction, we would need two-thirds of the members present, so we'd be looking for a minimum of four people, obviously, to make this pass.
Okay. Thank you, E.J. Anything else? With that information, I'll open up for public comment. As part of the public hearing, is there any member of the audience that wishes to speak to this as part of the public hearing? Any member of the council have input as part of this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
I know that we always, when it comes to bonding and establishing a levy, we just got done doing that, and there was a lot of discussion. And we know that things are getting tight. So my question is, what's the cost adverse if we kick this one down the road? Jason, E.J.?
Yeah, Jason, I'll turn that to you. If you delay street reconstruction on the, what's the long-term impact?
Sure. Thank you. You know, I'm not prepared to talk about specifics, but I think typically, you could see a 3% to 6% increase in project costs on any given year. It depends on markets and conditions. But, you know, I think another consideration that E.J. had mentioned is that we're bonding for surface water and wastewater portions of this project. It's not just all street costs or general fund bonding here. We're also doing that to prepare for 2025's College Drive Reconstruction, understanding that we're going to have to make a pretty large payment to MinDOT right around the turn of the year, 2024 to 2025. So city staff's been trying to position themselves to be ready with cash on hand in those funds to make those payments, and this is part of that plan.
Thank you, Jason.
So, E.J., what impact does that have on levy going forward, then? Do we know? Can we make an estimate?
Sure. Based on everything at this point that is planned to proceed to the debt issuance, which includes the street reconstruction that we're talking about right here, the abatement portion, which we'll address later this meeting, as well as an improvement portion of the bonds, which relates to another street project that's on this list, the Lion Circle Reconstruction, if that would move forward, that has enough assessments that it would go forward as an improvement, not a street reconstruction. It's just based on the number of, the amount of special assessments we have as a percentage towards that project. Then a fourth portion of that bonding would be the airport, whether it be the snow removal equipment building. We're talking about doing some work out there related to the instrument landing system, things of that nature. And right now, Helena is part of that as far as the purchase of land there. If everything went through at this point, we'd be looking at about a 5.3% increase to the 2025 levy based on where we are today, as far as the new amounts. Obviously, it's subject to change. Some of those projects may come in or out, or may, at this point, would go out. But that's where we'd be, if everything moved forward today, it'd be about a 5.3% impact to the 25 levy. We don't expect everything necessarily to move forward. I think it's fair to say.
Thank you, E.J.
Mr. Mayor, just a question.
Sure.
Jason, did you say 36%?
3% to 6%.
3% to 6%. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that correctly. So it could be, you know, two to three more million dollars just in one year if you would wait on this particular project?
I don't think it'd be quite that much, Sharon. Let's just, for easy math's sake, just say about $100,000. It's not out of the question.
Depending on all the costs of everything.
Correct.
You know, we've seen asphalt skyrocket, and then it can come back down.
Correct. It usually doesn't come back down too far, but you can see some changes.
And interest, yeah.
The one thing that I want to, that I think I want to inject in this is that part of the reason why Whitney has fallen where it has in our PINT schedule is because of the College Drive Reconstruction Project and our need to align our utilities in with the work that's going to be done with MinDOT. So there is some cost savings. When this is already on a utilities, infrastructure, or utilities project list with a higher ranking of importance, there's a cost savings or a benefit to the city and to MinDOT to have these things happen in this order, to have Whitney done prior to the College Drive so that our utilities are ready to accept the work that's being done under College Drive. Am I right with that? Because the PINT spent an awful lot of time talking about this project also to bring it forward.
Yes, thanks, Councilman. That's correct. We are coordinating and working extensively with MinDOT to coordinate our actions here. We are trying to get out in front of their project, which would probably go by this area in 2026. So this is phase one in this area, and 2025 has a phase two, which would be Charles, Minnesota Hill. It also picks up some really important improvements in the water system. We've got undersized water main circa 1940. We're just, it's an important area for our utility, so we're trying to work in coordination with MMU to get their important work completed, as well as coordinate with MinDOT and the other improvements coming in our community.
And that's kind of to back up a little further. That was one of the reasons why we pushed urgency on the Third and Lion Street Reconstruction Projects. Also, we put Addison Parking Lot into that schedule also to try to make sure that our grades matched up when we're coming, MinDOT's coming through, to make sure that we don't end up with some kind of an abnormal or unreasonable connect. So it's important to coordinate all those big picture things, too. That College Drive project by MinDOT is huge. That's a big project coming through, and we want to make sure that our work lines up with that also. So that does kind of keep this as a higher priority as far as PINT is concerned on our infrastructure list to do projects. That's my input. John was also on that committee, if he wants to add anything to that, or...
No, I agree. I agree with what you're saying.
Other input as part of this public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now consider, then, the resolution that would approve the five-year street reconstruction plan and the issuance of the general obligation street reconstruction bonds. E.J., anything more you want to clarify in the resolution?
No, everything is contained within the resolution. It was looked over by Kennedy and Graven already and provided by them.
Couldn't council have any questions about the resolution? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by John, seconded by Craig. There's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number Four is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the General Obligation Bonds Series 2024A. This is, this public hearing will be on the resolution that would approve the property tax abatement to finance certain public improvements in the city. So a portion of the projects would be covered by a tax abatement of certain identified properties. E.J., I will call on E.J. Mulberg once again to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you. So again, by state statute, we are allowed to offer or to finance some of these projects via the tax abatement process. This is different than the tax abatement we normally see where these homeowners are not going to get any money from us in this case. This is a financing source. We're pledging the city's share of the taxes of these residences to go towards the debt as needed. So of the $600,000, as we're asking not to exceed, specifically, these are related to the parks projects. So this would be for the Legion Field bathrooms concessions and viewing, which we talked about a donation a little bit earlier. This would go towards some of that for Phase One, we're kind of calling it. And then it would also deal with Independence Park with the back parking lot project that's planned for this year. So again, it's up to $600,000 after this hearing would be something that we'd identify, these parcels. These are the ones that were published in the newspaper on December 26th as part of the notice, are these same parcels. So then, these parcels would just be pledged for that. This one is, just a majority vote is required.
Okay. Thank you, E.J. This is a public hearing, so is there any member of the audience that has input as part of this public hearing? Or any member of the council? If not, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
By Amanda, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So now we'll consider the resolution that would approve the property tax abatement to finance certain public improvement in the city of Marshall. That was the topic of the public hearing. Any questions about the resolution? E.J., anything more you want to clarify in the resolution?
Again, it was provided by legal counsel, reviewed by staff and our municipal advisor.
Is there a motion related to the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the property tax abatement.
Motion by Amanda, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And this motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and there are a number of items today on the consent agenda. Some of those are routine because this is our first meeting of the year. So the items on the consent agenda include the resolution designating the official newspaper, the resolution designating the official depositories for city funds for 2024, consider the resolution delegating authority to the city to make electronic fund transfers, consider the approval of a resolution to authorize the finance director to pay certain claims, consider the approval for the Marshall Golf Club to conduct a raffle on June 1st, consider the approval to renew a 3.2 off-sale liquor license for Freedom Value Center, consider the approval to renew a tobacco license for Freedom Value Center, consider the approval of a taxi cab license renewal, the introduction of an ordinance amending the city charter and calling for a public hearing, introduction of the ordinance adding Article 8-8, 18-8 Residential Rental Code, and call for a public hearing, the adoption of the annual election to set micro purchase thresholds of $25,000, consider the approval to change the regular meeting dates in August and December, consider the approval of the administrative hearing officers, the acceptance of the donation to the Marshall Parks Department for the improvements at Legion Field, the repeal of the emergency ordinance 23-019, and then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project names. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for a separate discussion?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda, to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And the motion does pass. So that brings us then to Agenda Item Number 21, Consider the Resolution Authorizing Submission of the Pay Equity Implementation Report. Presenting this is Sheila Dubs, the city's Human Resources Director. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, I'm asking for the council to approve a resolution that allows me to submit our pay equity report to the Minnesota Management and Budget Office. Our report does show that the city is in compliance with the pay equity law. A little bit of background about this, this report is due once every three years in accordance with the Minnesota Local Government Pay Equity Act. And those words are important. This law doesn't apply to private companies or businesses in communities. This law applies only to public entities in the state, so Minnesota state employees, cities, counties, and school districts. Every public jurisdiction in Minnesota is required to submit this report to the state once every three years, and we've been doing so since the law was enacted about 40 years ago now. I have provided some background in your packets related to the item, but sometimes this is a misunderstood topic, so I'm just going to review a couple of highlights with you and explain why we do this. The purpose of the Minnesota Government Pay Equity Law is to eliminate pay inequities based on a person's gender. In other words, the law is a method to eliminate pay discrimination against women in the public sector. Minnesota's law does not address individual employee pay differences, and it doesn't consider the external job market. Rather, it relates to the overall structure of our pay system. So the statistical analysis evaluates our compensation structure, which is our job evaluation points. Every title, every job title is assigned a point value, and then it also, excuse me, evaluates our minimum pay and maximum pay rates. This law is one of the reasons that we conduct our classification and compensation studies and hire consultants like Gallagher. This law does require all public entities to assign points to jobs so that every class can determine the comparable worth, and it requires that pay rates are established relative to the knowledge and the responsibilities required to do the jobs, not on a person's gender. I'm going to briefly review the compliance report. That's page 108 in your packets, Stephen. If you could go to 108 on the screen, please. There are four tests of compliance with the Pay Equity Act. Again, the statistical calculations are performed by the software system. I do not do any of that. The city does not have software to do any of that. So in Section Two, there's a statistical analysis test with an underpayment ratio. Ours is showing an underpayment ratio of 93.3. To achieve compliance, we need that ratio to be 80 or higher. So our ratio, being 93.3, meets and exceeds the ratio. So we are in compliance with pay equity requirements. If that ratio is below 80, the city would be required to modify one or more female job classes by increasing a pay rate to achieve a ratio higher than, of 80 or higher. The next two pages show the data that I've entered into the system. The number of males and females for each job class are entered, along with the maximum pay rates. These are not actual employee pay rates. They're max, minimums and maximums of the job. And then all the salaries are converted to monthly totals. So in the minimum column, that's our step A in our structure, multiplied by was 173.3 for the monthly total. And then the maximum column is our step J for each of the job classes, multiplied to get that monthly total. On the next page, the predicted pay report, if you go, one more, Stephen, one more, sorry. There we go. The predicted pay report is the most often misunderstood report and generates questions. We would use this portion of the report only if there's a compliance problem, so if our ratio was below 80. The biggest misconception with this report is that it shows that job classes are over or underpaid, but that is not the case. The last column, the pay difference column, is not an overpayment or an underpayment. It reflects guidance. So it's more, this is more of a worksheet for us to help guide us if we were not in compliant, to get us back into compliance. If we were under 80, we would use this to identify the female classes where an adjustment could be made to bring us back into compliance. So we do not need to use this report for this time because we are not out of compliance. So this evening, I am requesting council adoption of the resolution that's in your packets, which would approve the report and authorize my submission to the state of Minnesota. Once we submit it to the state, I do need to ensure that proper notices are both sent to the unions and posted so that we are in compliance with the act. With that, I think I'll stop there and answer any questions you might have.
Okay, yeah, before we get to questions, just a word of thanks from the council. Obviously, you put a lot of detail into this to do a very thorough report, so thank you for your work. Questions on, for Sheila? If not, is there a motion to accept the Pay Equity Implementation Report?
So moved.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Once again, thank you, Sheila. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 22, the Authorization of Services with WIDSEF for the Purposes of the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant Application for 2024. Once again, I'll call on Preston Stensrude from our Parks Department to present this agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, as a proposal from WIDSEF to fill out all the necessary paperwork and mapping for us to apply for DNR's annual outdoor recreation grant. The last two years, we've utilized WIDSEF services, and they have 100% success rate in obtaining grant dollars. Two or maybe three years prior, we tried to do it all in-house, and we didn't, weren't successful at all. I can't remember the exact total, but I want to say it's like a 77 pages by time it's all said and done with all the maps and all the stuff that you have to do. So we wanted to bring this forward. The project we're intending to use funds for, if awarded, would be to do some sort of renovation or refurbishment to the bench hill at Liberty Park. As we know, the bench hill's deteriorating and needs some serious improvements. I think it was in 2021, we had a structural engineer look at it, and I think we've shared that report with you guys as well, too, and it shows miscellaneous deficiencies, and the wood support structures are pushing off of the foundation and stuff like that. So we don't have money in this year's budget for the bench hill, but this, if awarded this grant, the funds are available until 2026 in June, and we tentatively have funding for the bench hill in 2025 in the CIP. So this either allow us to have some matching dollars to go with that funding to do more work, or potentially save us some funds, depending on what the total project comes back at, as well as if we aren't successful in this grant application, it would give us a us another time next year to try again. We do know it's going to be very costly. I think the structural engineer just kind of threw out us a number, and he thought that 400 to 450,000 for just to take all the EFS off, straighten all the curved structures, waterproof it, and put new stucco on. That was not doing anything else around it, just strictly the, the structure of the band shell. So with that, we thought we'd bring this to you guys for approval in this maybe kind of conversation on, you know, thoughts of what that might look like, too. Now would be the time, because we're going to have to put that in the grant application as well. You know, are we thinking, keep it there, just remodel, start all over, build a new one there, those types of things, because the costs are kind of changed significantly. With that, I think I'd just kind of open up for questions. We have money in the Community Services Admin Budget for grant writing, so that's where this would come from, so.
Okay, thank you, Preston. Questions?
Well, I think I have more of a comment in that, you know, if you're looking for some input, Preston, and in conversations that I've had with at least a couple of community members who are significantly interested in this and have brought their concerns forward to me about what is the future of the band shell. I think at a minimum, just looking at the size of the community band and how well they do or don't fit in there, we wouldn't want to go smaller. So hopefully, we would at least restore what we have, and depending, I think, on community interest, and granted, we're looking for community participation in the Aquatic Center, so I don't know, you know, if those are, if those are duplicate requests, or if it's a different base of, of people that would, that would be interested in the band shell project. But, I mean, I definitely think we need to proceed and apply for the, for the grant money. I don't, I personally don't think we, as a city, want to lose that. That's one of the things that, that's good in the summertime. It's a big community event that band shell gets other use besides just the band, but I think it's a good community gathering point, and it's, it's a fixture in the community. I think it's good for kind of our legacy of what happens here. And then the other question I have is, any money that we spend with getting the grant writing, that could be considered part of our local match, right? Is that, would that be considered project cost? Maybe, maybe not.
I don't think we can, like, pay it, reimburse ourselves because it can't be any funds until after. It's, we have a contract.
Got it, okay.
I'm sorry, we have a, we're putting in a little bit of a, a chance, but we have the opportunity to get a lot of extra funds.
Right. No, I'm all about the, a good, solid application gives us a good result, so I'm definitely supportive.
So Preston, you may want to mention the, the last project that this firm helped us with will be a project that will, will be constructed this year, and that's at Independence Park.
Yep. So last year, Widseth did their proposal for the shelter that you guys have seen with the posts that are all rotting, and as well as the bathroom there will get replaced with a concrete or brick block structure, and that, they were successful in that grant application. I can't remember the exact dollars, but I want to say it was, we rewarded like 219 or 229,000, where originally we had the bathroom in the CIP and the shelter. So we kind of got almost kind of buy one, get one type of deal, but, so that'll be another improvement to that park. And like I said, just a lot of work and a lot of mapping, a lot of information that goes into the grant that just takes a lot of staff time, too, if we were going to try and do it ourselves, so.
Other questions for Preston? If not, you have the request. What's the wishes of the council?
I move we accept Widseth's proposal in the amount of $15,800 to do the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant Application on behalf of the city.
I'll second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 23, Consider the Resolution for the Minnesota State Aid Street System 2024 Advanced Funds for the Overlay Bond Payment and the 2024 Active Transportation Grant Project. I'll call on Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in the packet, you've got a resolution that is required for us to advance funds from the state aid street system. As you identified, the funds would cover those two projects. One is bond payments on the overlay project that we completed in 2021 on numerous state aid routes, and the other portion of the funds is, will be dedicated towards PK 013, which is our AT grant project for 2024. That includes RRFB improvements on County Road 7, trail realignment in that area, added trail along US 59 from Boyer to Windstar, and then an RRFB crossing at 59 and A Street. That's a $360,000 AT grant project. The purpose for using municipal state aid funds would be to reimburse engineering costs, and then we've also put in a little extra in case the project comes in a little overestimate. So we just wanted to make sure that we request enough, because when you're in an advanced state like we are with our, our balance, you do have to go through this process in order to get funding, so we wanted to make sure that we hopefully only have to do it one time. So that is the resolution. You'll note that our, our current construction account balance is $2 million advanced, and once you figure in our allocation for 2024 against what we're planning to draw out of the account, we'll end the year around 1.6 million advanced. So I can answer any questions if we have them.
Let me just add, the municipal state aid account is available from state dollars that originate from the gas tax, and the, the active transportation portion of that is for total transportation projects, so that's why the trails and the safe pedestrian crossings are in, included in that. So these funds are available for communities 5,000 and population and, and greater, and typically, communities that have development going on or have infrastructure replacements tend to draw on this fund more than communities that have, have less activity. So that's why communities like Marshall are usually advanced, and some other communities might be more of the givers, so. Questions for Jason? If not, you have the request, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 24, the Justice Park Trail Project. We have a resolution that would, Consider the Resolution Authorizing the Agent of the Sponsoring Agency of the Transportation Alternative Projects, as well as a resolution, a separate resolution identifying the responsibility for operation and maintenance for the Transportation Alternatives Project. I will call on Jason Anderson once again to provide the explanation on the both resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. MinDOT District 8 is currently soliciting for 2028 Transportation Alternative Grant Funds. This is an annual programmatic grant that District 8 ATP administers. So city staff worked together. We worked with the Preston Stentru and the Parks team to determine some good candidate projects to apply for funds. Luckily for us, the TA program is starting to shift the focus from new development to replacement work, which is great, because there's a lot of trail infrastructure out there that needs work. This is one of those areas through Justice Park, where we would be proposing to replace the pedestrian bridge that connects Pleasant Avenue over to Justice Park, as well as the trail that you see on that map in red. We'd be proposing concrete surfacing for the trail. To complete the grant application process, we'd like the city council to offer support for the grant application. You'd be doing that by approving these resolutions, one that identifies the city as the grant sponsor, and another that identifies us as the entity responsible for managing the grant. Local costs, because it is an 80/20 split, the local cost is estimated at this time at a little over $100,000 in cash and roughly $82,000 in engineering fees. We would propose to cover the local end with the municipal state aid dollars if allowed to, but that, that's our plan at this point in time.
Jason, not to put you on the spot, but there is some history with the transportation alternative projects that, while this one is 2028, past councils have given authorization for the project to be constructed in 2024, correct? From A Street to Southview Street for the bike trail expansion?
Yes, that is correct. We would have to meet with MinDOT planning staff, but I, I do believe you're correct that there are times where you may advance your project into more nearer terms if you're able to pay for it and cover the cost until the grant comes through.
And then the 2026 approval is for, there might be others with it, but the Lion Street Trail Improvement?
Yes, yes. We have the 2025 C Street-Southview Trail, and then the 2026 East Lion Street Trail that are both funded through these, the same program.
Yeah, that was my point, is that, you know, it seems like, you know, you're planning a long ways ahead of time, and you do need to plan a long time, because that's what the application and funding process is.
Yeah, sorry, I misinterpreted you, but if we are interested, I do think you can possibly advance the project in the prior years, but you're correct, five years can kind of move us by pretty quick, so.
Yeah, okay. Didn't mean to get you sidetracked on that, but questions for Jason?
Yeah, I just have a little question. Jason, does, because I know this is projected for 2028, so the price that they have there, that's going to be locked in for us, then? It's not going to be more because of materials or labor or anything like that?
Yeah, that's a good question, and you do have the cost estimate in the packet, too, for your review, but my recollection, and I'd have to check with Eric Hansen, our Assistant City Engineer on this, he put the numbers together, but my recollection with this program is you're encouraged to use current dollars, and when they make grant award, they will apply inflation factors on your behalf.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be made by the Area Transportation Partnership?
Correct. The MinDOT planning staff would kind of recommend those factors.
Right. Good question. Other, any other questions for Jason? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by C. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion?
Is this for both items or just the third, number one?
I think we need to handle these, can we handle this in one motion?
We have them set.
Perfect.
So this is for the Resolution Authorizing the Agent of the Sponsoring Agency for Transportation Alternatives Project, correct?
Correct.
Good clarification, Craig. We'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. And then the second resolution would be the resolution identifying the responsibility for the operation and maintenance for the Transportation Alternatives Project.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 25, the Country Club Trail Reconstruction Project. Again, we have similar resolutions, the authorizing agent, as well as the resolution that identify the responsibilities. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Same grant program, similar application. This is a replacement of existing trail along Country Club Drive between Sherrill Avenue and Travis Road. This is about 1,300 feet of trail that's in pretty poor condition and also has some drainage issues that we'd like to improve. We're also proposing a concrete surface for this stretch. The cost estimate's also included in the packet. The local cost is just shy of $71,000 in this estimate, with engineering fees close to $57,000. Again, we'd propose municipal state aid street funds to be the local matching dollars.
This section of trail has a number of driveway cuts that are maybe at different elevations. That's going to be corrected?
It does, and that would be our plan to work through that and improve drainage. There's quite a few areas where water sits in ponds, and it just doesn't drain well.
And I think bikers, some bikers avoid this just because there are those, you know, up and down and, yeah, so.
Yes, and there's getting to be some pretty significant pavement distresses in the trail, too, which could be a hazard.
Right. Questions for Jason?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, C.
Because there's a lot of driveways there, are there going to be any special assessments to the owners there at all?
So city staff would not propose to do any special assessments. That's always something we can discuss as a council if we'd like to do something different, but our take on these trail projects is that we don't assess for the trail projects. That's just our street reconstruction, and this is a, a trail replacement that we're kind of bringing to their front door, and we usually don't. We usually do what we need to do to tie out and, and make things work. We, that being said, we won't make significant improvements on their properties. We're going to make the amount that we need to tie things together to their existing driveway and make it drain.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll consider first the resolution authorizing the agent of the sponsoring agency for the Transportation Alternatives Project as listed as our resolution number one.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. And the second resolution would be identifying the responsibility for the operation and maintenance for the Transportation Alternatives Project. Questions about that resolution? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by C.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 26, Council Commission Liaison Reports. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Airport Commission met last week. Probably the biggest thing on the topic of discussion there was the ILS, and Jason mentioned that earlier, the, pretty significant for the types of, of flights that come in and out of Marshall, especially when you look at questionable weather, marginal weather. And the equipment, as I understand it, from MinDOT Aviation is, Aeronautics is there on site, but there's still a lot of work that needs to get done. There needs to be soil borings, making sure that they've got suitable soils. There's going to be grade work and that, so I, kind of the whole summer, right, Jason, if everything moves well, removal of some existing structures that are there to clear up some approachways, and then construction or placement of new structures to house the equipment, but, so there's going to be some pretty, I wouldn't say significant, but important work that should happen over the next season, and hopefully, it's done and tested by, by fall, but, you know, again, I'm going to throw a pitch for the airport and the, and what happens there. It's a pretty substantial business in Marshall, just even with Midwest Aviation and the maintenance and things that they do there with theirs, but when you look at the importance of flights that come in and out, and who really relies on our airport, especially in marginal weather, and these flights are coming in from all over the country, actually, you know, so it's, it's a, a lot that's unseen that happens that, that this airport and our public works staff and our engineering staff serve that flying public pretty, pretty significantly, and they do a really good job. So I just want to give my hat off to them again for, for what happens there, and remind people again, you know, some of the important aviation assets that come in and out of here also support our medical, emergency medical programs and other things here, too. So as we see these things come up for that airport, it's important that we keep focus on it and keep it moving forward. It, it is very significant to the community, and we should be proud of it.
And Craig, this will be the, the time, thank you for those comments. The Airport Commission, I believe, has two openings?
Mm-hmm.
So any member of the public that has interest?
Apply.
Yeah, I think there's some clarification going on over here. Is there one or two openings?
I was thinking one for sure, but I was checking with Stephen.
So we would encourage applicants for the Airport Commission, as well as other boards and commissions.
Better have too many applicants and not enough. Than not enough, exactly.
Anything else, Craig?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
So EDA met, and it was kind of a year-end wrap-up. A lot of the stuff, we've kind of A lot of the stuff, we've kind of seen what's going on, and we thank Lauren and her staff for working so hard, but everybody sees the quick trip going up and almost ready to open January 25th on College Drive. The second one hopefully will be going up and starting on, in June sometime, if everything goes all right, and we don't anticipate that anything will go wrong, but you never know whether and whatnot. Staff is beginning to accept completed applications for the Main Street Revitalization Grant. That's, if you have interest in that, approach EDA, and they are still working on things for development Block 100, and then I'm going to let Amanda talk about the rest of this stuff.
It feels like a long time ago.
It was.
And I think one other thing that we talked about was our strategic plan. Last year, we all got together at the beginning of the year and came up with a really good strategic plan, and I was amazed by the amount of things that were accomplished this year, and I wish I had it with me to tell you exactly, but Lauren does a fantastic job in the EDA and her staff, and looking forward to this year, so we can check off some more boxes.
Anything else?
No, nope. Public housing was delayed and there wasn't planning commission.
Neither one of my other ones met.
Okay, and from my standpoint, Southwest Regional Development Commission meets this Thursday. John?
MMU meets next Tuesday, so.
And C?
DEI met last week. We just discussed there's upcoming committee meeting for Juneteenth. The DEI Commission approved sponsoring, it begins with us, and we are still looking for a consultant for strategic planning, and then do you know how many positions we have open for DEI?
I think three or four.
Three or four, so.
Off the top of my head.
Yeah, so if anybody's interested, we need some more board members there. And then Library met yesterday, and we kept it short because of the weather. Oh, four?
Three.
Three, all right, three, thank you, Stephen. And then Library, we welcomed our new board member, we went over the director evaluation, and we felt Michelle's doing an amazing job as a director of Library there, so, and then we kind of cut it short. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that really comes to my mind is, of course, we've had the nice first, nice snow of the winter, and just remind everybody to clear your sidewalks. Be good neighbors, clear your sidewalks, look to your other neighbors. If you have neighbors that are elderly or not able to do an adequate job of cleaning their own sidewalks and steps, help them out. Watch for your neighbor, take care of your neighbors, especially now, we don't need slips and falls and those types of injuries, and we have a, we've invested a lot in the community for ADA accessibility, and those ramps and all those sidewalks are great if they're clean. If they're not clean, we don't have them, so take care of your neighborhoods, clean your sidewalks. Thanks.
Very good.
I have nothing.
Amanda?
I don't have anything.
C?
Oh, that's it, nothing.
And John? So I have a couple of things. At the last, last meeting of last year, I indicated that council committees and commissions and liaisons, if anybody had any, requested any changes, would let me know. Typically, we make those changes every other year following the election. Several of you got back to me, the majority of you got back to me, and everyone that got back to me said, we're just fine with where we're at right now, so I would propose no changes, so. When, Craig, when you mentioned sidewalks, and again, this is winter time, but, you know, we do have this program where we cost participate with sidewalk replacement, and so this is the time of year I think homeowners, you know, might be thinking about projects for the year, and, you know, we should maybe put out some publicity, you know, through our social media that we do still have this fund available that would do cost participation. Basically, we pay half, correct? For a sidewalk replacement, we correct any deficiencies that are there, so, you know, with concrete and with soil movement, you know, you end up with heaves and cracks and tree roots that are causing problems, and so it's a good opportunity to make your property, adjoining property safer, so.
You know, Bob, and that's, I'm glad you bring that up, because now if you think about that, as you're out there having snow on your sidewalk, if it's hard to shovel it or the snow blower gets hung up on it, it probably, you should look into that program because then people walking on it are going to have problems walking on it also, so, thank you.
So this is also the time of year that, well, of course, it's the first meeting of the year, and I always do this, where I pick out the, really the top priorities, at least in my mind, and I think the council's mind too, so, so these are, I wrote down 10, 10 things for this year, and I think most of these are no surprise to the council. These are all things that have been really in the process, so first would be the Aquatic Center. We have, this is a year of planning so that we're able to be sure we're doing what the voters authorized that project to be and that is planned appropriately so that it can be delivered on schedule and on budget, so that's going to take a lot of involvement, not only from our staff, our consultants, and ultimately the council. To assist with that, first off, through Jason's department, Eric Hansen, the Assistant Engineer, has been identified as the owner's representative to work with Stockwell, the engineer consultant on this project. We also need a council committee, that would be that ad hoc committee that could work with Eric on this, similar to what the City Hall Committee served, and they served very well during the City Hall reconstruction. This is a project that will, will start, of course, in 2024, but it will stretch into 2025. So I've asked the three council members who are not up for election in 2024, so we know that these three are going to be around in 2025, to serve on the Aquatic Center Committee, and thankfully, they've all said yes, so I would appoint Craig and John and C to be on the Aquatic Center City Council Ad Hoc Committee to work with key staff on that project. So that's, that's one project. Secondly, and as it has been, and these are in no particular order of priority, but second on the list would be the Highway 19 project. We've talked a lot about this. There's been a lot of planning. This is really the final few months of the planning process because it's scheduled to be bid out in November, so this will be really the, an active year for being sure that we're comfortable, and MINDOT has everything planned right before that project ultimately begins construction in 2025, recognizing that in this process, we'd like to mitigate any inevitable disruption that will happen, so. Third is industrial development, you know, and, you know, it was announced this past fall, the Solugen project, which certainly is a, will be the largest likely project. It's a $90 million project, very exciting project, and the, but there may be other opportunities, and to echo what both Stephen and Amanda said, the EDA has been very active in that as well as other projects, so continued industrial development because that's continued job development, which also supports retail development, which is also on the list, and certainly the continued development of the ShopCo building as well as others. It might be standalone, it might be, you know, the, working with the new owner of the mall about additional opportunities there. Finally with, not finally, but, you know, with job creation really comes housing, so affordable housing, which is really essential for workforce development, would be on, on the list, and as we know, both state and federal, there's been opportunities that have been funded for communities, and I think it's our role to work with agencies like United Community Action, Southwest Housing Partnership, Minnesota Housing Authority to, to take advantage, not take advantage, but to utilize some of those funding opportunities to expand affordable housing options in Marshall. Also on my list would be the cannabis policy development, which of course, our city attorney's very involved with. It's really, a lot of that work is dependent on clarification of the, of the legislation, and there may be additional clarification, but also determination by the Office of Cannabis Management on what the specific rules will be, and that's really going to influence what we as a community can do as a policy on cannabis. Also on my list, and it wouldn't be a complete list if I didn't talk about the census, you know, I think one of my goals in 2024 is to really know what our 2020 population is, so we continue to have involvement with Senator Klobuchar's office, who is really doing everything her office can do to really determine why will the Census Bureau not release what our census number is. They've accepted our appeal of our, of our census, but not released the number. Also on the list is Emerald Ashport, you know, the, we know that was identified this past year, this 2024 will be the beginning of a lot of decisions about removal, about treatment, not only in our parks, in our public ways, and along our streets and trails, but also on private property, and we've been successful in some grant opportunities, but this is going to be a transformational for the community when a lot of the forestry canopy goes away over the next five to 10 years because of Emerald Ashport. That also then leads to my next item, which, which is where are we disposing of these trees? And I think we all know that the, we have a very convenient tree disposal site and compost site, but it quite honestly is going to be inadequate to handle the volume of dead trees that are going to be hauled, hauled out there. So I think we need to really think hard over the next few years about where is a better location for our tree disposal site as well as our compost site, and we do, do we also consider other methods of disposal in addition to the burning? You know, there are possibilities for chipping that may or may not be cost effective, but I think those are all things we need evaluating. And then finally, and I mentioned earlier, that three of the council members here as well as my position is up, so elections will be a big deal in 2024. So that's my list of, of 10. I think I counted 10 there, so. So with that, I would then, that's really all I have for individual items, so I'll move then to staff reports and call on City Administrator Sharon Hanson.
Two really quick items. On a past practice, current practice, we do publish commission opening, so we will be doing that soon. I know I've talked to the city clerk about doing that. It does also, of course, help to ask people. Typically, they may not be aware, they may not see it in the newspaper, so people who know others who have interest in particular topics does help fill the committee, commission assignments probably the best, but we will, as a standard practice, publish the notice of openings to be, to ensure we're opening it to everyone. And then I know that we just met, and it was hot off the press, but LNO did meet this, late this afternoon, and we did take up THC manufacturing by breweries, and also consideration of adding on sale consumption of beverages only. I think staff have a pretty good framework of what LNO wants, and they have directed staff to bring back an ordinance to the next council meeting, so that's the status of that, and I will let the city attorney add anything to that that she wishes or that I may have missed, and that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Sharon? Jason?
Thank you. Just to build off of what Councilmember Schaefer said about the instrument landing system project, we may be bringing to council at the next meeting a scope of services for some engineering work from TKDA. By the next council meeting, we'll see if we get that in place in time, but the Airport Commission gave us the go-ahead to bring that to council once we get it, so look for that coming soon. We had a pre-bid contractors conference today at 2:00, I think, with TKDA and interested contractors in our snow removal equipment building, so that was good. Quite a few prime contractors on the call as well as some other subcontractors, so that was good to see some interest, so we're hopeful that on January 23rd, when we open bids, that we'll get a few bids and they'll be competitive, so we'll see how that goes. Just a couple upcoming things that'll make you aware of. January 11th, so this week, I think that's Thursday at 1:00 PM, we'll be meeting, or I'll be meeting with a group of, a wide range of people to talk about the Redwood River and the condition of the banks along the Redwood River. There's kind of a task force that's been created that we're all meeting, there's different folks from different agencies, Lyon County, DNR, city, et cetera. We'll see where that takes us. I'll keep you informed if anything comes out of that that we should talk about or act on. And then on January 18th at 5:30 in, in this room, we'll be hosting the Property Owners Online Circle to get comment on the possible reconstruction project at Lion Circle. That was the direction from the PAT Committee. The last time we met to discuss that project was to seek that input and report back, so we'll be doing that on January 18th, and if we haven't already put that on the calendars of our PAT Committee, I'll make sure it gets done this week, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any questions for Jason? If not, Pam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I'll just touch briefly on a couple things that Sharon said and on the consent agenda as well. So just one quick add-on to clarify Sharon's report that the council will see as part of that recommendation, inclusion of on-sale beverages for any, any on-sale liquor license establishment, just so that that's clear, for that recommendation is what the, the direction that was provided. And with respect to just a couple of the items that were approved on the consent agenda, I just want to give a heads up for when you're looking at your packet for next time, there was the call for hearing, and there will be the discussion on the rental ordinance, which was a really great process, and a lot of work went in from not just people in staff and on council, but in community members, so I just really want to recognize the process that went into that, and that was great. You probably noticed there was the repeal of the emergency ordinance, just as a reminder, if it seemed weird, that there was an ordinance that was on there that didn't necessarily follow the normal ordinance processes because it was repealing an emergency ordinance, and so we're obligated to repeal it in the same way that it was adopted. So that's why that was on the consent agenda, and I think that that's, oh, with respect to the charter amendments, also just a reminder that that is a recommendation from your charter commission, and the process to amend the charter, they can make that recommendation to council, but that would be in unanimous approval when council consider those, so that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Pam? Pam, thank you for your work.
Yeah.
We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda this evening. It includes the administrative brief for the council's review, the listing of building permits, as well as the listing of upcoming meetings. So is there any additional business to come forward at this meeting this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda to adjourn discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes, we are adjourned.